All the meeting of the State Board of Education to order. I appreciate everybody being here. And welcome to the Board of Public Education members, the Regents, staff, and members of the public. I want to thank MSU and the Regents for hosting us at this meeting. Dylan, can you do roll call?
Yep, thanks Governor. I'll start with the Board of Regents. Regent Rogers.
Here.
Regent Buchanan.
Here.
Regent Lozar.
Here.
Regent Dombrowski.
Excused.
Regent Bowe.
Here.
Regent Southworth.
Excused.
And Regent Blossom.
Here.
To the Board of Public Education, Board Member Quinlan.
Here.
Board Member Hedlin.
Here.
Board Member Lacy.
President, good afternoon.
Board Member Keith.
Here.
Board Member Hammond.
Here.
Board Member Rasmussen.
Here.
Board Member Tharp.
Here.
And Superintendent Aronson.
Happy Friday.
And Commissioner Christian.
I'm here.
Thanks, Governor, you have a quorum.
Okay, great. Before we get started, I think Superintendent Aronson has a very special introduction to make.
Thank you, Governor, and all dignified people here. Want to just share with you that we have an expert in the house. And it is a teacher. This is Montana 2023 Teacher of the Year. This is Catherine Matthews. And I told her that I wasn't going to speak. I needed her words to resound here at the university and have your ears listen to why she is Montana's Teacher of the Year. Catherine.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm thrilled and a bit overwhelmed by all of this, but really excited and thrilled to be here and trying to take advantage. I teach special education preschool here in Bozeman. I have for 22 years. And I truly love working with my team. It's not possible without my team of paraeducators, admin, so many people that assist us in the process. My goal with being the Teacher of the Year this year is to bring awareness to the importance of quality early childhood education and special education for our state and our nation. And I hope to encourage our local community leaders and government leaders to demonstrate the respect and generosity and support that we need to provide that quality education to every child in our state and our nation because it's much deserved. Are there other specifics that you would like me to go into in regards to?
Maybe questions, I don't know.
Sure.
That might be.
Any questions from anyone?
Well, this program, this program is housed at the Office of Public Instruction. And we have a legacy though. There is quite a legacy of, how do I say, Teachers of the Year. But behind Ms. Matthews, there are multiple Teachers of the Year. And Anne, would you like to say anything to the program at all?
Oh, you're putting me on the spot.
Of course.
Thank you. I served as the 2010 Montana Teacher of the Year. And it's just a way to show everyone the amazing professionalism that teachers do every single day, serving the students of Montana across the state. It's a really hard job and teachers need our 100% support. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just tag on to that, everyone, behind Catherine, how many more stellar teachers do we have in every single one of our public school systems and beyond? And I just am so tickled. So when we gave her the award at Highlight Elementary here, it was so fun. Her son was in the room and then we waited for your father to come.
Yes.
Because in education, it is a family. You know, our spouses, our children take this journey with us. And it was just so exciting that day. But you have so many more new ones. And the best thing about this is she's going to learn in professional development with another cohort from all across our 50 states, 49 others, plus the four territories. So we're very excited for this. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Miss Matthews, let me add my congratulations and thank you for representing all of our
teachers so well.
No, thank you.
We're excited for you.
I will do my best.
Okay. As you all know, we're here to approve the unified executive budget for education going into this next legislative session. Before we review and vote on the budget, I want to provide each of our offices the opportunity to share our priorities for K through 12 and post-secondary education in Montana. Everyone here is dedicated to ensuring our kids and all students receive the best education possible, to prepare them for the future, and to help them reach their full potential. I want to take a few minutes to emphasize the things that unite us in this endeavor and that our administration will be working on in this next legislative session. First, we all want what's best for Montana kids and believe they should receive the best education possible so they can reach their full and outstanding potential. So let's support individualized learning and other innovative approaches to education that have been shown to produce better outcomes. And let's ensure that each Montana student graduates with a better understanding of civics and personal finance so they can be effective citizens of our great state and nation. Second, parents are our kids' first teachers who ultimately educate them for a lifetime. They know their kids and their kids' needs better than anyone else, and we must protect their rights so they can be involved in their kids' education. And then third, our educators must receive the resources they need to teach our kids. We must pay our starting teachers more for the hard work they do as they start their careers. And we must ensure resources, more effectively get to the classroom. Before I dive into each of these areas a little more deeply, I'd like to address a serious problem that we all face, and that is the learning loss that has resulted from the pandemic. Across our country, politicians and others decided to shut down schools and campuses during the pandemic. Some students got back in the classroom quickly, other ones did not. Throughout the pandemic, students lost valuable classroom time. Some were not learning at all while others sat behind a computer screen at home. All lost valuable learning time and social interaction, and unfortunately, they're paying the price. An entire generation of kids has fallen behind. Math and reading scores have plummeted nationwide, now at historic lows. Montana's students were impacted too, but our learning loss fortunately was not as great as many other states. Regardless, we must redouble our efforts to get our kids back up to speed and on the right track. And I'm confident our schools and educators are going to do their very best to do that. But there's more we can do. And that leads me to the most important people in a child's life and education, their parents. They know their children best. To Montana parents, I'm asking you to help us close this learning gap. I urge you, as well as grandparents, aunts, and uncles, to help our kids get back up to speed. It's easy. Please, read to your kids 20 minutes a day. This will help close the gap. Early childhood literacy is critical for their development and for their long-term learning success. As an aside, there are many reasons why I'm proud of our First Lady of Montana, but she is working, as part of her philanthropic work as First Lady, to get an age-appropriate book to every Montana child aged zero to five each month via the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This is a great initiative, and we look forward to making that a reality. The second thing parents can do is, and we're math fans in our household, being all engineers, but we need to help our kids get good at math, so parents can help their kids with math. And if they don't feel like they're math experts, there's lots of great resources online to help close that gap. Working together, parents and educators, we can close this learning gap for good and get our kids back up to speed. And finally, I just want to say to parents, thank you for all you do in helping to partner with us in the education of your children. As I mentioned, parents are our kids' first and lifetime teachers. They educate their kids at home. They deserve to have their voices heard and be part of their kids' education at school. Nothing has emphasized this more than this recent pandemic. With their kids learning from a computer screen at home, parents across the country became more familiar with what their kids were learning and doing. It motivated parents to become involved like we haven't seen in a long time. Unfortunately, some school boards and even some local, state, and federal officials didn't think parents should be involved in their child's education. Again, while these instances were not widespread in Montana, we must ensure that government does not stand between parents and their kid's education. In the next legislative session, we will protect parental rights and ensure transparency in their kids' education. Ultimately, we want all Montana students to receive a high-quality education that prepares them well into the future. Education unlocks students' imaginations, sparks their curiosity, and opens the door to greater opportunities. Each child is unique, and we should ensure that each child has access to the best education possible that meets his or her individual needs. That's why in our budget, we've proposed doubling the cap on the Big Sky scholarships, and we'll be working with legislators to expand other educational options for students as well. I continue to believe student success and ultimately, the future of Montana, literally, depend on classroom innovation, individualized learning, and work-based learning. Since every student is unique and has needs and interests, we will work with legislators to expand individualized and work-based learning. With individualized learning, students progress at their own pace regardless of age or class. Students are measured on where they are on a subject and move through content areas based on their level of competency. Expecting all students to learn at the same pace holds some students back and leaves other students behind. We can do better. If a student is excelling in math, that student should be able to move ahead in their lessons through individualized learning, while others can get extra help they need to master the material before they move on. With work-based learning, students can get on-the-job experience and simultaneously learn, applying that experience to their graduation requirements. And I'm very pleased that some of the measures we enacted in the 2021 legislature are now being taken advantage of by local school boards to do just that. One example I like to highlight is the work-based learning in rural Montana is up in Glasgow. High school students there can take a Certified Nurses Assistant classes, earn dual credit, train at the local assisted living facility, and graduate with a CNA certificate via Miles Community College. And because Miles Community College offers this program virtually, it is available to all Montana students. I know they're also using this program from Miles City in Conrad, Montana, to help high school students there graduate with CNA certificates. We should be doing more of this, and we need these opportunities across all of Montana. The Montana Digital Academy is another program that opens the door of opportunity. It allows students to access classes which may not be offered in their local school anywhere and anytime. It breaks down geography barriers for students. It's an outstanding program, but as I always like to say, better is always possible. Working with the legislature, we will reform the Digital Academy to open the doors of opportunity even more and expand its positive impact. Taken together, these reforms will help every Montana child reach their full and outstanding potential. Ultimately, when students graduate, they should be well-prepared and well-equipped for their lives and for the opportunities that await them. There is a clear, growing need for civics, personal finance, and computer science education in our high schools, and I would say younger as well. As we approach our 250th anniversary of our nation in 2026, our students should be equipped to be citizens of the 21st century. They should learn about our proud history and the sacrifices and struggles of the men and women who founded and formed our great nation. They should understand our founding ideals of equality, opportunity, liberty, and justice. They should appreciate how these ideals have been preserved, especially by our men and women in uniform, who along with their families sacrifice to protect our rights and liberties. Our students should also graduate with a knowledge of personal finance, so they may be financially literate, understanding budgeting, paying bills, paying taxes, saving, and navigating debt. Today, Montana is ranked 29th in the country in terms of guaranteeing student access to personal finance courses. We can do better. I'm very pleased that the Board of Public Education and Superintendent Aronson are working to bring personal finance education into our high school curriculum. That's well done. Working with parents and teachers is critical to delivering the best education possible to Montana kids. To the teachers in the room, especially you, Ms. Matthews, thank you. Teaching our kids is a calling, and you've been at it a long time. Educators are near and dear to my heart. My mom was a math teacher, and now my daughter is as well. So I know how challenging, but also fulfilling, that calling is. So thank you for your work, and thank you to all our teachers for what they do in the classroom. For too long, teachers who have answered the call and just started their careers haven't earned enough. As they begin their first years in the classroom, their starting pay has been too low. That's why in 2021, I championed and signed into law the Teach Act. The Teach Act provides incentives for school districts to increase starting teacher pay. The program has been a great success, helping hundreds of Montana teachers so far. But don't just take my word for it. I've been meeting with starting teachers throughout the state who have benefited from the Teach Act. One teacher up on the high line told me they were able to give up their second job and have more time for the classroom and more time for their family. Another one shared with me that they would not be in the classroom if it hadn't been for the $3,500 increment in their pay that even made choosing teaching an option for them. So it is making a difference, but again, better is always possible, and we will. That's why our budget increases funding for the Teach Act by 40% in this upcoming legislature, specifically to increase starting teacher pay. I look forward to working with the legislators to get this across the finish line so our starting teachers can earn more. And while we'll build upon the Teach Act to support starting teachers in Montana, it's just as critical we address the teacher shortage that we face, a shortage that impacts every state in our country. Over the last year, we have championed reforms to bring more teachers into the classroom. We worked with you to streamline education licensure to improve the recruitment of high-quality teachers for our Montana students. Those efforts are eliminating barriers to licensure for those who are interested in teaching. Like our K through 12 schools, there's a lot of great news coming out of the Montana university system as well. I want to thank MSUB for piloting the Sprint degree, which Regent Bowe championed, and that is in our budget. So that is funded, and we look forward to seeing that enacted into law. By reducing the time to degree completion, we can reduce the cost of a college education. I'm confident this model can be replicated across the university system. Using GEAR funding, we're also integrating a single course catalog and a single learning management system across all of MUS. Pretty excited about that. When implemented, Montanans will be able to access educational opportunities from the MUS regardless of where they live or what campus they are enrolled in. We're also focusing on creating more individualized and work-based learning opportunities in the MUS. Through public-private partnerships and with an emphasis on CTE funding at our two-year campuses, we're making the college experience more flexible and responsive to Montanans while reducing the time and cost required for a degree. As many of you know, some of my top priorities remain addressing the underlying costs of education, expanding public-private partnerships, and reinventing the classroom, and targeting on-time graduation. I'm proud of what we have accomplished on these goals together over the last year, but we still have work to do. And by leveraging partnerships between industry leaders and our campuses, I'm confident we'll create even better outcomes for our students. With that, I'll turn it over to Chair Rogers and Commissioner Christian to share their priorities for the Montana university system.
Thank you so much, Governor Gianforte. So wonderful to be here all together. Thank you all so much for taking the time out of your day to join us. So thank you again, Governor Gianforte, for bringing us together, and thank you to the Board of Public Education for all you do to support Montana's excellent public schools. It's great to be meeting in person again, and it's a great time to be on campus. We hope everyone gets a chance to walk around and experience being here. There's also a little football game this weekend that you may or may not have heard about. Whether you watch football or not, it's really an exciting time for all of Montana, and we're thrilled. ESPN will be featuring the Brawl of the Wild and the great state of Montana tomorrow. First off, Governor Gianforte, I want to thank you for your commitment to higher education and for the funding you proposed in your budget for the next legislative session. We are incredibly pleased with the budget that you released on Tuesday and know how much work that you and your team put into it, so thank you. The proposed investments will do more than simply sustain our institutions. They will directly impact the future of this state by expanding opportunities for students and doing more to meet the state's workforce demands. The investments will help us extend the benefits of higher education more broadly, providing more opportunities and ultimately, greater prosperity to Montana students. As you all know, we don't make decisions about our legislative priorities in a black box. I'm especially proud of how these proposed investments came from conversations with state leaders, community and business leaders, and others about how we can all work towards shared goals that move our state forward. Our priority going into the upcoming legislative session will be to take every opportunity we can to demonstrate the strong connection between the investments we make in higher education and the return on that investment in the form of business innovation, a strong workforce, skilled leaders, and more opportunities for the future. We'll also highlight the enduring value of the Montana university system, which is, as you know, celebrating 50 years this year. It's clear that by working together across the state, we can foster healthy competition, reduce redundancy, achieve greater efficiencies by taking advantage of economies of scale, and provide more opportunities. As we look to continue to provide the benefits and value of higher education in the future, our priorities for the session are to, one, support the strong base funding and present law adjustments that are proposed in the governor's budget; two, to support the long-range building program request, which prioritizes updating and making critical improvements to our existing buildings and properties; three, to support the state's pay plan that will provide a meaningful adjustment to thousands of our MUS employees who work every day to carry out their mission for higher education while supporting their families and communities. We have an amazing faculty and staff across the system who are committed to our shared success in Montana. We work to retain the best people possible, as we know we won't succeed without dedicated employees who contribute to the system, our communities, our campuses, and our students. As people are facing rising costs and increased competition for jobs, we need to make this investment in the state's pay plan now more than ever. And our final focus, four, to support priority, one-time-only projects. These support critical investments that catalyze long-term opportunities, like the support we're seeking for the Seamless System and Sprint Degree Initiatives. As always, we'll be advancing this work as a diverse board that works across the political aisle and across the state for the benefit of our students and for the prosperity of all Montanans. Thank you again for the opportunity to join you all today.
Thank you, Chair. Just for the record, Commissioner, who are you rooting for in the game tomorrow?
Mr. Governor, I'll be right there in the middle of the field. The good news is, one of my teams will win.
Okay. Well, I think Montana's certainly going to win tomorrow.
That's right.
Chair Quinlan, Superintendent Aronson, please share your priorities for Montana's K through 12 schools going into this session.
Sure. Thank you, Governor, and good afternoon to all the members of the board and the audience. It's good to be here. The Board of Public Ed has just finished two days of meetings and wrapping it up with this meeting joining you all. Board of Public Education has a very small budget by comparison to other state agencies, less than a half million dollars a year, but we are a mighty board, and we have a major impact on K-12 education in the state. We have a couple of pieces that are in the budget that will help with the efficiency and more reliable funding for the Board of Public Ed. We have supported the proposal from the state superintendent to switch the funding of teacher licensure fees back to the Office of Public Instruction, so it will no longer be a funding source for the Board of Public Education. It's been backfilled with general fund, and we appreciate that. And that will be both an accounting improvement for our agency and also more reliable cash flow, so we appreciate that. I guess I would like to speak just a bit about the work that the Board of Public Education has accomplished in the past year. And so even while we don't have a big budget, we have been doing some heavy lifting. And in this past year, as the governor mentioned, we have taken on the revision of a portion of our state administrative rules related to educator licensure, Chapter 57. We've made it easier for experienced teachers from other states to become licensed in Montana and to bring their experience with them. And we've made it easier for licensed teachers to gain additional endorsements and provided ways for them to demonstrate their qualifications. So we are looking forward to seeing the results of those changes and for monitoring the results of those changes. It will be a somewhat delicate balance to remove these barriers and then watch to make sure that we are really maintaining high quality in the state. We've also adopted revisions to our administrative rules related to educator preparation programs at the university level. The Board of Public Ed just yesterday wrapped up its review of our public comments, and we are positioned to adopt those new standards in January with an effective date for July. Again, we've provided some new, certainly updated those program standards. They hadn't been updated in over a decade, and we've provided some new avenues for teachers to be prepared for being in our teaching profession. We've maintained a priority on preparing teachers with ways of ensuring that they know their subject areas, understand the importance of evidence-based practices, and participating in professional learning communities. We've also reinforced the emphasis on professional ethics and whole-child well-being, and we think those are all an important part of an educator preparation. We are just beginning our, well, yesterday, we spent a better part of the afternoon going through the proposals for revising the standards of accreditation for the state, and we'll continue that process when the board meets again in January. And just two other things I want to highlight is that the entire board has been participating in the legislative initiated effort to bring the constitutional players together and to really try to coordinate our efforts in terms of developing P-20 education. And I also want to mention the Montana School for the Deaf and Blind. We had a really great report this morning and interaction with our superintendent there at the School for the Deaf and Blind, and they are doing amazing work and making great progress to strengthen the academic programs, the strategic planning and alignment of academic programs to the standards, as well as providing all kinds of supports for children who are being served at the school, including career planning or career opportunities, even some work-based experiences. So we were really glad to hear that. And then finally, we did this morning, adopt the Professional Code of Ethics recommended by our Certification Standards and Practices Advisory Committee. So pleased to have all that work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Quinlan. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Hall.
Sorry, really sorry to interrupt, Governor. Superintendent Aronson has an update as well.
Governor Superintendent Aronson has an update as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, Superintendent.
Thank you so much.
And who are you rooting for tomorrow?
I am that 50-yard-line girl. I got a degree from each one of these beautiful institutions, so I'm on the 50-yard line, and I'm going to be here with the Teacher of the Year. It'll be the first media break that we have, correct?
That's absolutely.
Excellent. So Governor, Chair Rogers, and Chair Quinlan, members, what a great opportunity to be here today. Five degrees outside and warm hearts inside, especially about education. Talked about yesterday with the Board of Regents about the partnership, have a great partnership with the Board of Public Ed, and Governor, thank you for that budget. I very much appreciate it. Very responsible, very reasonable. Your discussion on teachers warms my heart and warms a lot of hearts around our great state. Teachers are so very, and so, they're so valuable, let's put it that way, within every segment, K-8, K-12, wherever it might be, in a one-room schoolhouse, as a leading teacher, or as a master teacher. So I thank you for that emphasis on teachers. More importantly, you warmed my heart, Governor, about talking about family. Family celebrations when we need to celebrate education. I agree with you. Parents are the first teacher, and we need to make sure that we honor that. And we bridge, as the school goes forward, we bridge that of what happened in that pandemic, that parents understand and respect, and board members and school leaders understand and respect. We need to put this together. That's who we are in Montana. We are resilient. So I've kept the Board of Public Ed busy, and I don't know if you recognize, that it's been very creative and it's been a tremendous lot of work. So Board, thank you. We have worked diligently on innovating, and I know we came to you in 2020 fall and asked to open up these rules, and I thank you for that. It's been a lot of work to get this across, not quite done yet, but we are going to be able to get there. I put this under four categories: Hope, Teach, Learn, and Ready. Hope are our children. We need to make sure that we focus always on our student. When we come to teach, it's that excellent teacher that you spoke about, Governor, that we worked with the Board of Public Ed, unflexible, but not diminishing the quality, wanting to make sure that we have an opportunity to build a residency program, quite possibly in Montana. And we need to make sure then that we have the best coming out of our 10 teacher prep programs. It's professional development by the moment they get into the classroom, because we know that year three is really difficult and teachers exit. And it is a profession. We must hold that profession up high. That's my job, and I thank you for the support. Hope, Teach, Learn. Back to basics. If we can get back to basics, we can remove all that review of possible social engineering that might be in that disequilibrium between what the parents and what is happening in schools. Let's not talk about that. Let's talk about math. Let's talk about reading. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to open up and research on the math standards. As I have foretold, reading is coming. It's around the corner, probably in your September meeting, where we'll be asking that we come to that. Yes, more homework, but such great work to really understand what this means in our classrooms and bringing parents into this discussion, Governor, as you had spoke. Then, investment. Hope, Teach, Learn, and then we are ready. That investment and that precious dollar of almost $2 billion, Governor, that's coming forward to our schools this next biennium, $2 billion. The only thing I can say about that, it's about timing. I need it before March 1. So, March 1, I need to prepare budget sheets by statute. We've carried this football across the line. I know I did it as a state senator and in my last three sessions here as well. We're going to get it across the line with the help of everyone here to make sure that our schools have stability moving forward. Montana Ready is exactly what you've all said. It's a private-public partnership. Let's make sure that our students, from the moment they enter with a possible graduate profile, if they're a K-3 school, they're going to recognize not the end, but the beginning of a student's career, wherever they may want to be. And let's open the doors to every single one of those opportunities for our students. It's not a one-day-career day anymore. It's every single day in a partnership to grow that Montana Ready. I believe, Governor, I heard from your Department of Labor that there are three jobs out there, and I have one Montanan to fill it. Now, the role of public education is not to fill that void, but we can help. We can help. And teachers, we need to fill that void as well. So, warms my heart with the great words. Thank you so much, Chair Rogers, for your leadership and Regents, Commissioner, and Chair Quinlan. Thank you. We have great work to do. There is homework coming. So with that, thank you for this great opportunity to speak. And again, can I have another round of applause for Catherine?
Thank you, Superintendent. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Hall, Jason Harlow, and Ben Turnz with our Budget Office to present our Unified Education Budget and answer any board member questions. Are they joining us virtually?
Good afternoon.
Okay.
Yes.
They're in the cloud.
I'm sitting here in beautiful sunny Helena, Montana. This is Nancy Hall, and I am the K-12 Budget Analyst, and I also have the other five smaller agencies in Section E. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
The document that's on your screen there is what we call the Unified Budget, and it shows the, the first line is the budget as it was expended in 2022, so the actual expenditures in '22 of general fund and state special revenues for each agency. The second line, the FY '23 appropriated is what is appropriated for this year we're in right now, this fiscal year we're in right now for each of those agencies. And the next two lines are the governor's budget proposal for '24 and '25 for each agency. And I thought I would hit briefly, Jason and Ben are the Higher Ed analysts here in the Budget Office. I will hit the other agencies briefly, some of the highlights. The governor and Ms. Quinlan and Superintendent Aronson have hit some of the highlights, but I'll just give you a few, throw out a few big numbers. $96.5 million for the biennium for the inflation adjustments of 2.7% and 3% in '24 and '25 respectively for the K-12 base aid number for OPI. There's an additional $75,000 per year, and because you've been talking so much about the teachers and all that they do, that goes for the National Board Certification stipends to teachers, so teachers who are nationally, have national board certification, there's a stipend available for them each year, and that increased by $75,000 over the $100,000 that was already in the budget. And then major maintenance aid, this is a match between school districts and the state to provide money for maintenance to the schools. We're adding another $12 million over the biennium for that purpose. So those are some of the big hitters. There's a lot of, there's several other smaller hitters in the OPI, but that was the big hitters in OPI. The Board of Public Ed has been, Ms. Quinlan spoke about that, the fact that we've moved the fees for the teacher licensure to an OPI revenue and funded the Board of Public Ed with general fund funding is a big plus for the Board of Public Ed, and this will give the superintendent the opportunity to utilize those for teacher licensure purposes. The School for Deaf and Blind had requested some new FTE. They have, in the governor's budget, we have two new outreach consultants. That student count has gone up to almost 1,000 students around the state, and we had too few consultants to reach out to each of those, so we allowed two new consultants. We allowed a new maintenance supervisor to oversee the facilities at the, on the campus in Great Falls. We allowed $45,000 a year for travel, one-time only, which means that each year they would have that $45,000 to provide an extra trip home or a trip home for each of the students for each month. And then we allowed $42,500 per year for family engagement summer programs, so some of those are bringing students in for a week of camp, both a camp for the visually impaired and one for the hard-of-hearing students, and then also for a family camp for each quadrant. For the School for Deaf and Blind, we also have one other new FTE in the budget that allowed for the, they call it a transition specialist, to help develop partnerships between businesses and organizations for the students, both for career training and for work after they get out of school. Those were the highlights for the School for Deaf and Blind. The Arts Council had some personal services fund switches from their arts, cultural arts administration fees and moved those into federal expenditures, and so that'll give more cultural trust art grants available. And $50,000 a year, they ask for general fund for state match to the federal money. As this federal money goes up, we have to have a little higher state match, so that's in the budget. The library, their big thing is they're moving to a location off-campus, and so we did a fund switch for them for a decrease of $293,000 a year for their costs where they were located, and their new lease will cost them $165,000 a year. So that was quite a cost savings for them. The Historical Society, as you know, our new building's going up, and the Historical Society asks for 24 and 1/2 new FTE for the new people, everything from security to new researchers and so forth, and those people will start being hired in '24. They plan to start moving into the building in October of '24, so they need those people to box things and get things ready to move into the new facilities and out of the old, so the old could be repaired. And there's about a $3.8 million over the biennium increase, but that will all come from accommodations tax that's already been directed in that manner. The money from the construction stops coming to them in December of 2024 and will become operations and maintenance funding after that, and that's the size of the smaller agencies in OPI. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Nancy, and I'm sure our subject matter experts, Jason and Ben, are there as well, but I know a lot of work has gone into preparing this budget. Appreciate all of your efforts, Nancy, in getting all the, you know, the five pounds of stuff into a three-pound box. So at this time, are there any board member questions or comments about the budget, from anyone? Yes, Tammy?
Thank you. Tammy Lacy, Board of Public Ed. I am the board's liaison for the Montana School for the Deaf and Blind. A lot of people don't know that the Board of Public Ed is actually the school board for MSDB, and I serve as the liaison for the board. And as Chair Quinlan had mentioned earlier, and Nancy outlined, the increases for the School for the Deaf and Blind. So on behalf of the children there, on behalf of the staff and the superintendents, I just wanted to thank you for looking closely at those requests and including them in your budget. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the board before we open it up for public? I'm excited about this new museum. It was, if you haven't had a chance, we've been involved, it's been going up next to the Capitol. I inherited the project. It was only $25 million over budget, and you'll notice there's no appropriation in here because of the generous contribution of Dennis and Phyllis Washington. It's completely being finished with private dollars, so pretty excited about that. We have a great story to tell in Montana, and we need a place to tell it, so it's going to happen right there. Any other comments or questions on the budget? Okay.
Governor, I think, I think Jason will go through the Higher Ed side.
Okay. Jason?
Yes, Governor, thanks, thank you for having us. Ben Turnz is also available for questions, but yeah, I'll touch on a few, few highlights here, a lot of which has been hit pretty hard the last two days of the Board of Regents meetings. So for higher education, you can see the about 8% increase. The highlights of those are a fully funded present law request that Ochi submitted, and then the seamless and sprint systems that have, that have been touched on quite a bit the last couple of days as well, and then in addition, HISA being added back in as well. And one thing that's not on this list, but is an important, important investment in education, is the governor's commitment in House Bill 5 of over $170 million in state funds towards committing to fixing the infrastructure that we have right now. That's the, the main highlights that I have, and if I stand for questions.
Yeah, and I would just add, that was really a theme in our budget. We, you know, when you get a little extra surplus, the first thing you do is take care of the stuff you already have. So we prioritized not only Higher Ed, but also the Montana State Hospital and the prison as places where we can kind of bring them up to speed. Comments or questions on this section? From the board?
Thank you for your investments, Governor.
We still have to get it through the legislature.
Yep.
Okay, so if there's no additional board member discussion, we'll move on to public comment on the Unified Education Budget. If you do have public comment, please come up to the microphone, state and spell your name for the record, or any organization you may represent, and I would just, if we do have any, is there anybody that would like to offer public comment? Is there anybody here from the public that wants to make their thoughts known? Twice? Is there anybody here from the public that would make, like to make their thoughts known? Okay. If people are watching online or review this script afterwards and they have additional public comment, they can certainly mail it to my policy advisor in the governor's office, Dylan Klapmeyer, or call the governor's office and ask for Dylan. We'd be happy to have your feedback. If there is no additional comment, I would accept a motion to approve the executive budget.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. At this time, the State Board of Education will take public comment on any matter under the board's jurisdiction. Is there anyone here that would, has other comments unrelated to the budget? Go Montana.
Go Montana.
Okay, well, I want to thank everybody for a productive meeting and for your commitment to education from K all the way through post-doctoral work, whatever you do over there. I'm really optimistic about the expanded opportunities that we'll be able to provide students and families and teachers. So with that, our meeting is adjourned.